Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Beach Council meeting for the evening of July 3rd. We'll open with, as usual, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Lieutenant, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our attorney is delivering her son to college today, so she won't be with us tonight. We're expecting them, aren't we?
Yes.
Go ahead with your roll call, Stacy.
May I have a raise here?
Yes, here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Mr. Mickey Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Randy Hummel?
There.
You are Mr. Chad.
Mr. Compan?
Here.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a couple of changes to the agenda. We are expecting, we put him under, you see under scheduled appointments, Mr. Anthony Green, who was the driving force for the film festival. He's not here yet. Anyway, we're looking for him to give us a wrap-up of that event, which occurred when we were in, those were Ocean City. And, under business items, number one, we will not be awarding the contract for the crosswalk installation this evening. Okay, with those changes to the agenda, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All pay say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's council?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? All pay say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Okay, we have our public safety report, Lieutenant.
Good evening. So we had 156 calls for services home to, or less home to North Beach, something 155 in a day. We had success on the investigation of bicycles in the Woods and Rose Club, couple of people had registration to the solo motor. And we had a house egg on the, the, uh, address, decent exposure, uh, in the salt press.
It was kind of active month, wasn't it?
Uh, I tell you, T, no.
You had some leads in these investigations?
Uh, some, some of them, yes, some of them, uh, bicycles were, you know, like, uh, once.
And the house was egged?
Yes, sir.
On Bay Avenue. Any indication of what the motivation was?
I think it's just kids at the park.
Yeah, wasn't that more jurisdictional, because I remember a couple cars, maybe a house just begins the same night?
Yes, and some kid would ride around together.
All right, does anybody have any other questions, Avram?
I have one, if this really has to do with your report. People are confused about speeding through schools in the summer. What is that?
Are you speaking of Beach Elementary School?
On Mount Harvey, New York, he is.
Okay, if you're referring to the ones that have the traffic cameras there, they're one of those basically every day except for holidays during the school hours posted, because there are sometimes school activities there and things like that. So they, that is enforced every day of the year except on holidays.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, my, my understanding was that the law could allow those, it's only Monday through Friday. And, and I can tell you that I travel Mount Harvey Road and I don't observe the 25 mile an hour speeding.
And that's, that's tough for, that's tough for.
On the, on the weekends, and I, and I have gotten tickets.
So have I.
But, but, but not, you can go through there after 4:30 on the weekend, you know, at the 40, whatever, posted speed, and on weekends.
You can blow right through it and not get a ticket.
And not get a ticket. So it's not every day, but holidays. And this is important for the public to know, because school's out, you know, and what is the rationale?
I'm, I'm pretty, pretty positive that, that they do enforce these on the weekends. You said you are getting tickets on the weekends? You are not. I could be, I could be wrong, man. I'll, I'll check.
I suppose, state-wise, Saturday's Sunday, I suppose, I thought one, one, something that you maybe, which was Saturday.
I'll double, I'll double check one.
Check on the state law, as I understand it, you know, it's, it's not after 4:30 only.
The one, the one down here, we run it from 6, or what's it called, 7 p.m. from Beach, Beach Elementary.
Well, there is, the point is, there's confusion.
Okay.
Now, I thought the one in Beach was taken down. I didn't see it the other day.
No, it's, it's in the form of a little green.
Oh, sneaky.
It's, it's, it's not sneaky, uh, what it is, is they, uh, what it is, they just switch companies, they switch them record, uh, because there was new laws covering how these companies can charge the towns for, and accounting for the citations.
And now you're having Wendy Hill also.
Yes.
Yes, you do.
Yes, they do. Now, my opinion is a, uh, it's.
Good anticipation of next month's meeting. Could you please research that?
I'll have you answer before then, and I'll shoot you guys in a minute.
And let us know what the state law provides and what it is that is being done in Calvert County.
And do you know Wendy Hill had posted on the sign, "Your round," and, like, every time one goes up, they're always going to see what the sign said, and it's like somewhere, they had the times there, like, on the school zones, and then, like, Wendy Hill, there wasn't a time, so it was "School Zone, Your Round."
Yeah, what does that, what does that mean?
Well, I, I can tell you right now, I, I mean, there's, there's a few going on today, I mean, I actually, I take 260 down, did a breakdown, so I just, because 25 on Mount Harvey Road, I mean, it's, that's easy to do. They're, they're giving you 10 miles an hour, 100, or they give you a, well, it's 25, but that's, that's easy, 40 mile an hour, very easy.
Just, I've had several residents bring up the speed of speeding on Bay Avenue going out of town from, you know, towards the, racing towards the Anorah Line. At one point, did you guys talk about having some kind of speed check there? I mean, it's really a really dangerous issue.
I think council, that's, I can even reference that, but I wasn't here when I was down, just found one or two people on Bay Avenue, or just began to touch on that here, we had some guys on, on somebody.
Bay Avenue, in and out, and they race in and out down that stretch between the Anorah Line and Mexico, basically nice.
So, so you're, you're talking about going, going out right into, into that one?
Out and in.
Out and in, from, yeah, the Anorah, it's like a race from Mexico to the Anorah Line and from the Anorah Line back, and, I mean, people fly down that road probably 60 miles an hour, kids and, like, people walking along that down to the nature preserve.
Can you put some deputies there at Knight, at Knight Street?
I, I get out of here, we'll get, uh, get an email out, I can tell you where they are. She's important there again.
Especially in the summer, you have people walking with their kids to the beach, you know?
I'll look at that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
We had some vandalism down at the beach, did you, I was looking in the report?
Just this past couple days. Yeah, uh, there was a hand railing, uh, and Ricky, uh, I talked to a lot of one about that, I wasn't sure 100% that it was vandalism, or maybe somebody actually, because it was just the screws pulled out, I pulled the adjacent ones and they weren't, they, they were loosened up that I couldn't, no matter, I could pull them up, um, by the means of the way they were passing there, but it could have been vandalism, it could have been an infringement, because the board wasn't like in front of the, the area where it's, well, I was saying it was kids, if I was, uh, but.
What if I was hostile, it's told that there is a light?
There was some things at the end of here, it's clear, it's property and, uh, Ricky arrested us, looking into that, in Anorah.
I wonder if it was the same, there was a person that was arrested twice in front of our house, in our neighbor's house, I think she was a mentally ill woman, came by, threw trash cans, broke lights in planters, it happened twice within one week.
I think if Ricky is looking at what he can determine, who was on the pier, or who might have been headed out that way, and in that area, by, by way of the video camera that we have, they don't, they're not one that ended up here, but they can give you some indication of who was in that area, maybe it's a little on the comments, so.
Those, those public kids, I can't, uh, groups of kids, um, and I think they chased them off twice, started fights and stuff.
Yes, uh, Mayor, you sent me the, the video, uh, just to let you know that again, we, it's very hard to get juveniles, any type of trouble, we did, uh, some committed to police officers for, for at least a night, and he is now on house arrest, uh, who wants to, uh, something to that, something.
Was that, was that back through?
There was a group of, uh, there, there was a group of, uh, towards the Woods and Rose Club, and, uh, he was, he was charged and.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Well, let's, let's hear from Anthony. Anthony?
Hello. Nice to have you. Hello, how are you, sir? Hello, everyone? All right, um.
Did you have an update on this?
Yep, update, uh, I'm just going to read it off, so I won't fumble it, I'm saying the stupid one's name here. All right, uh, 2017 North Beach Film Festival was extremely successful, uh, the event was pulled off without a hitch, thanks to the professionalism of the wonderful North Beach staff, Randy, I want to give you a shout out, so. Um, the dealers and volunteers that assisted in the festival logistics, we had a total of 117 attendees, actually, the number is, I think, we had a total of 135 attendees, uh, including 24 filmmakers that came out and actually stayed throughout the weekend, um, they were present throughout the three-day event. Our head after taxes of $1,301.52 in ticket sales, allowing us to present the town in North Beach with a 15% proceed of $195.22, and the Twin Beach Players, a 10% proceed of $131.50. Our Calvert Student Filmated Grant, in connection with Arts Council of Calvert County, went extremely well, with films produced by Cameron Walker and London Shore premiering on opening night, the films produced by the Southern Roundness students will also be shown at upcoming film festivals, I got them in a couple of festivals coming up in DC, and I think they're going to do some international stuff too. Sweet Shoes Bake Shop, Bay Wine Spirits, with phenomenal addition, donation, donating food and wine to our meeting, we have a party, uh, also noted as the donation of flower arrangements from Chesapeake Bounty, uh, we would also like to thank Todd Donson for performing at the event. The, uh, North Beach Business Loop had a strong presence at the festival, commercial ad streaming before each stream, we received reports that newcomers to the town did visit area retailers and purchased goods, Twin Beach Fenway Gold Ceremony sponsored by North Beach and the generous donation from Chesapeake Beach was well-attended, and the food after over from the event was donated to the North Beach volunteer fire party, and they were really happy. And Cheryl showed up. Um, right up with our event was posted in Calvert County, and the Calvert record is obvious freezing us, uh, talking about another year, I was asked a couple of times when, when the dates for next year were, and I was like, I don't know, I have no idea, I'm just trying to get through the day. Um, but I want to thank the mayor and the council members for allowing us the opportunity to bring both the Beach Film Festival to fruition, I'm also very thankful for Stacy's guidance and assistance, as well as Don's diligence and Mickey's hard work.
Mickey, like a mouse.
Okay, I thought it was Mickey. Uh, I didn't want to say Mickey, and then he was, uh, the short version, okay, so.
It does with that elementary school long ago.
Right, it's open now, because, uh, I want to thank for his hard work, and Mickey showed we have what we needed, uh, Randy and his staff were wonderful, there were no issues that had to do with. Richard, Richard, I mean, because you're Randy. That's Randy, that's Randy, Richard. All right, all right, um, but it went, it went well, people enjoyed it, people came up to North Beach for the first time, never been to, and live 40 minutes away and loved it here, uh, some people still are talking about planning roots or moving out, but it went really good, um, did you guys have any feedback from me at all, or anything that you're interested in talking about?
Do you plan on doing it again next year?
Uh, it's up to you guys, you guys will have to do that, and I have some, some good ideas to, to, to make it look stronger, but, you know, that's something to talk about once again.
Well, unfortunately, Anthony, most of the council wasn't here.
Right.
Because we had a scheduled conference out of town.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, if we do do it again, you know, we need to work on the dates so that we're not in, you know, conflict.
Okay.
But for us, successful is meaning we don't get complaints, and, and we get received none.
Okay.
So I would say the town is very, very pleased with your administration of the festival.
Oh, yeah, it went, it went without a hitch, there were no logistical issues, there was nothing that started late, or, or people complaining about the setup or anything, like, we, we had a good time. Um, the movies are subjective, people will think everything is great, or only that movie is great, so that's, that's hard, that's how that works out, but as far as the event itself, it went really good, um, it was very favorable, people who do live in town really enjoyed it, and, uh, have nothing positive to say about it, and people come out of town just love the place and really come back, so.
Well, we consider it a real addition to our, um, calendar, so I hope we can do it next year, and when you feel you're ready to start, let's, let's do that.
Right, I have another festival next month, so after I get the August festival out of the way, then we can start again.
Thank you very much, Anthony.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. In addition to this, it was left?
No. No. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That, that could be ours for that night.
Yeah, I think, I think this is ours. I think that goes out.
Okay. It was left up here.
All right, thank you. Joanne?
Treasurer's report from May 1st through 31st, the union balance was $160,000, total debit was $759,000, and total credit was $559,000. Ending balance of the checking account was $360,000. MLG IP investments in the general fund was $3,802,000, MLG sewer was $34,000, and MLG IP water was $7,000. Total cash available to the town in North Beach was $4,204,000. For the same period last year, it was $3,140,000. Calvert County Hotel tax, we collected $130,000, for the same period last year, it was zero. State business licenses was zero this year and the prior year.
Council, you have Joanne's report before you have any questions?
We should be getting way more than that for, is that monthly or quarterly?
Well, they submit, it was, um, monthly, but it's been a little off, so I'll get Kelly to trigger another, um, request.
We should be getting way more than that.
That, that was pretty much the people from the street.
Something, something's not right there. Was it $130?
No, this is from May.
Still doesn't sound right.
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Thank you, sir.
All pay say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Donnie?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I have a list of, this is part of, and give you an update on some of the larger projects, projects for the whole of the town, uh, the first one, I'll give you an update on the flood lake project, I'd like to, in a couple of weeks, say this is all the list, but we're getting closer and closer. Um, environmental concerns has computer work on the flood lake itself, uh, the area was planted yesterday, they started planting on the pond side and worked up the burn, you know, playing that. Surface for grading's been completed, um, on the Amherst side, on the flood lake, um, east and west side, back where the worst stuff. Now that was, uh, grading was gone, that's obviously, kind of a bad time of year, but hopefully other, other stops and repairs is gone. Um, today, I just got an email at 4:45 or so, from Gene from Environmental Concerns, uh, kind of laying out the plan budget-wise for the inlet piping to run it over the ninth street. Like, if anyone goes to the area, you'll see, it's a low spot on the east and west side, that's what it posed into us, what we have in mind, and this plan has not been confirmed throughout our fall, as it's actually, but it's putting two inlets there, piping it over at any time if it exists in the ninth street, from the road system.
In a month, do you think you can present us a, a plan and a budget that, that, that are on speed?
Yes, again, sure. All right. So once that is completed, there, excuse me, straw, after it's been completed, uh, streetscape drive, I can work with landscaper, um, contract on completing a portion of the streetscape that was in the contract, um, annual flowers are scheduled to be planted but not part of this contract, but we had trees, shrubs, they're in Calvert Park, the tree wells, that was in the streetscape contract. Tomorrow, um, we did get some prices, uh, pretty, fairly reasonable prices for Green Street, we had, we had a lot of them give some price, Green Street was a lot cheaper, and also I want to highlight it, show up a little bit, they're coming out tomorrow to add the annual tree wells, and also some flowers in the Calvert Park.
And bring some, we'll see some color.
Color, right.
You think we're there, we're, you know, we got angles there for color, and we switch out to where some, kind of in front of the, um, see them all at Calvert Park, they're really sculpted and designed, flowers more there, while they're here, they're doing fast stop, yes, they're just in, all ahead, it's kind of tight, um, also they talk to some businesses, they're kind of business talk here, and also kind of ask me, everybody up town, maybe the rest of the summer.
Have you spoke to the touch and talk, please? They've got two flower beds right in front of their building, and they don't, these could do this also.
Yeah, I walked around, tried to, they actually did a walkthrough, we did look at that area, and we looked at the fast stop and also Woods and Rose Club, because that had been planted with the animals this year, uh, in front of the town sign, First Street also an area to be planted, and, uh, we took out the 6x6 railroad ties, uh, fully dated Woods and Rose Club, we're going to sculpt that area, kind of mask the, uh, the town sign, so it's prepared, and, uh, and then, uh, a little time, decided, decided, and that.
Yeah, the, it's not the only reason we're doing this, but one of the reasons for the information for the public is that we will have judges in town in two weeks, less than two weeks, on 23rd and 24th of the month, from the American Bloom Competition, that we are entering for the first time, you know, with the guidance from Green Street Gardens, and of course, we want to win, we want to be recognized, and go to, uh, compete successfully in that competition, so everything's kind of pointing to that, uh, lots of that temptation there.
All right. Trees, um, everybody noticed, they got a lot of texts, a lot of emails, on the trees, great marbles that were installed in the, um, tree, but just a lot of, I thought they put out last Sunday, um, we had a, uh, harvest, kind of look at the trees, and they explained to me, also contacted, like, they, when you dig them up, they got them out in Tennessee, you know, they bring them around, you know, and, uh, all, they're actually in the ground, when you dig those up, up roots, that, set as roots, so the tree goes into a shock base, and the shock base, you know, trees aren't safe, so it sucks all the energy into the tree, roots and the, and tree itself, that's why the leaves puts them around, you know, the leaves are the first thing, they're, the leaves are the leaves, but, you know, you can see, kind of, there's some of the greens on the back, on the tips and everything, you know, we back the leaves, back the stem of the trees, they're not brittle, I'm breaking off, figuring your flesh, you know, so you did put out, you met last, uh, answered my questions on that.
It's our belief that the trees are alive and well, in spite of their.
And we do have a year warranty, which.
Yeah, so we have a warranty.
And also have a, uh, paid, uh, totally paid, like, that, oh, we do have a year warranty, that was just kind of, the guy actually, up in Atlantic, has a couple town houses in Far Oaks, and he wrote through the other day, and stopped and ran, helped me, made a buck, so, he's, you know, concerned about there, because he does have some problems with that.
Well, I noticed some of them started to green out again.
Yeah, they're trying to come back around, and so, but this, this time of year is probably the worst time of year to plant trees, but we had to get done, so. Um, the, all that's the final things, besides the crosswalks, is the lighting, uh, Kenny is just kind of working on the, uh, whole lights, and also the tree well lights, they did finish up the fast stop with tree well lights itself, so the night, you know, you notice when you get, and they put out two fast stop pretty much second street there, old base, concrete basis for it. Um, Kenny was pretty busy, I thought of his big church out there, um, kind of, this one, built up a yard down there, but, please, I think that's.
I'm, I'm walking with Rick tomorrow, at that long Chesapeake County.
Great, great, yeah. Um, Calvert Park, at Calvert Park, we did quite a bit of work over there, for anybody who's been up there, uh, we did install a new sidewalk, but we suppose, actually, it looked, it matches the Sunrise Gardens, that's sort of some Chesapeake Avenue that goes all the way through to, to, uh, Dayton Avenue, uh, persons regraded all that area there, we moved the pavilion also, put a new pad, moved the pavilion, we painted all the plastic and structure, uh, frame of the pavilion, and then we also sited around that area, kind of dressed up there, and it was a lot nicer, we got a lot of compliments from the parents second kids, you know, really enjoy where we moved the pavilion too, now they can watch the play around there, a lot better, we keep their style, so. It's pretty normal ways, I think, and we added, and they, um, we also took out a fence that was on the north side of Woods and Rose Club, uh, looked unattractive to us, but if they have a spot there, we have fences, we need vines, and, uh, people to maintain, we know they're free for there, so we took that to have a plan with landscaping that, and also put new entrance on the north side, so we can come out the alley again, with the sharp, uh, uh, pervert.
Put gas, exactly.
So it don't have.
Do you have all the new sidewalk?
New sidewalk, we heard that, uh, yeah. Yeah, we, we moved a fence, gates, uh, scheduled to be installed next week, and then, uh, I said, we're gonna drop it here, uh.
I think, I have to move that one pole.
Right, and we do have that pole, we have that for me. Um, we said a little bit earlier, a couple brokers been working with Green Street Gardens, doing a lot of different preparation for American Bloom, that visit is on the 24th of July, which is a, uh, Monday a week from December, uh, we also did a pretty thorough briefing maintenance on both ponds and Sunrise Gardens, and then this event, the council moved, and asked about a little bit, and the water was slow some days, uh, we filled it up and stayed here for a while, but what actually happened, there was a plant, we know it so well, they were growing, and they were blocking up the flow in the top waterfalls, and also we found some kids, or whoever takes someone rocks and places them in the waterfalls, which is backing up the water, and water would run out the side, and that was causing the pond, but, we get humped up the top, it's trying to run back down to the bottom pond, that's running out to the sides, so, one of them just cleaned it, so, maybe a clean job, when I got all the out, we have to, to prep that for American Bloom.
Is this more of all we can expect that day? I mean, it's gonna be a team.
Stacy's been working with.
I hear the, I hear the, uh, the, uh, generator, uh, Sunday.
And then the judge is coming out Sunday, but Stacy's been talking to Brad and committee, so she might be able to do that.
Do you have more information for her? She's going, you aren't full with it?
And then another, now we've been, we had a couple, we had a water main, uh, saddle that came off the Greenwood Avenue, um, one house connection, saddle that should all sit in the mortgage, uh, that was repaired the next morning, uh, people down house, uh, so that will, they had a couple, just a sewer, sewer, had residents where, uh, on Ninth Street, it, not even dating, it's a oak tree, it's probably 75 years old, it's still around on top of the sewer, cleaning out the roof, and, 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 we need to clear it enough where you can use it, um, that would be a challenge to fix permanently, because that tree probably, uh, on the, on top of the two houses, you know, no matter what, it was, you know, happy, we showed them the camera picture of the line, um, I think it was last, it's 12, so, we decided, but, uh, we need to take them, uh, this year.
All right, anybody have any questions, Donnie?
I, I have two of them, real quick. Um, you and I spoke last week, and a week before last, and about the, in the properties, about the grass cutting.
That's what, and I'm giving you a deal with.
Okay.
My kind of question about the properties, like, right upon the prop, I know the sidewalks, uh, several little, something, I'm, uh, it's right upon their property, a lot of properties now have, um, they cut the yard, cut up their fence, but they leave the strip between the fence and the street, um, and that comes in, it's, they do work that.
And again, it's, my neighbors, one of them, and they're elderly, so we can help them take care of the yard, and we cut it, but then when they hire a grass cutter, they don't cut up there, so we just want to make sure we guide them the right way, even if we got, the kids got to go over and cut it for them, that's fine.
Yeah.
So it's basically, all grass is in the property.
They're supposed to make, they're, unless they're on the alley.
Right. All right. That was, that was good for you, huh? Thank you.
That's, that's. Jane?
I have one thing for you, Donnie, uh, at Calvert Park, at the, in the mail conference, I picked up a, a brochure of, of all kinds of things to put in there, and one thing I really liked was it was round, big, and it was for children or adults who, who were handicapped, and it was the level of wheelchair, and they could slide right off of the wheelchair, right onto the specific equipment, they couldn't hold themselves on there, and they could slide up to a part that protected them, and, so sometime when we're looking at that, and it must, yeah, we think, and.
Do you have some information?
Give it to Joanne.
Is that the one, uh, company, there's one company, me and Don stopped, I talked to, they were right in St. Ray's County.
I don't know, I remember, I just picked up the brochure and talked to them, the piece of equipment is fascinating to me, the fact that you can do something for handicapped, for children, or even adults who are wheelchair bound all the time.
That's a good idea, cause we think there are quite a few that actually come to Dallas Park. And, uh, you know, going to pick me, take where it says, it's something to pay out.
Yeah, where the pavilion used to be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we still have some funds, you know, from the bonds of these, for Dallas Park, so, yeah.
Now, I'm just gonna say the issue about the unboat purchases, docked, and, you know, and did the restoration.
Yeah, I went a hundred percent clear on that. I know it's like sidewalks, no, it was, because it's, I know about grass. Possibly a six pack, you did, um, that cut in front of one. That was in the corner of eight and date, but he's been cutting it every, every, um, week, so. That probably, I don't know, six pack.
Just real quick, on, on the berm for that last piece, the, um, inlets and the pipes tonight. Once they do that, how long will that take to do things?
We're not sure if they're gonna do it or not.
If they do.
We just got a, uh, one area, uh.
Right.
Email, right, what I like to do is they, we did, uh, we didn't get any structure, size wise, we did get pipe size. But we didn't get all we needed, cause I like to get that on the books, and I like to do that, or we can put it out to bid and compare, the price you got from around one concern, and see if that is the deal. I mean, it looked like it's fairly reasonable, I didn't have time to go that, that close, cause it came up four thirty at night. But I like to get, we don't have elevation, we don't have, you know, all we need, we're gonna do that, you know, half hour. Um, Jean, um, she was nice enough to have this guy, she always great.
Right.
We just haven't, he's been asking for him to give us that information, gotten that yet. If we don't get it in the next couple days, we'll go out and shoot the grid or sell them, and we can fill a plan and make sure it works and be comfortable with what he suggests.
I mean, once we decide, who, once we decide who's gonna do it, in like a couple days, is it a week, is it a couple weeks?
It's something about probably, um, three hundred feet, like, doing it, um, hardest part is not in the ninth street. And where we did, I think it was a very deep, once you do push, you know, it's all brown, uh, we'll hit the ground with it, uh, you know, putting the inlets in, it's pretty shallow, running a pipe to where it's the lowest property is, just, it'll be another box there, so actually three boxes where two come together. And that'll be one pipe that runs out tonight. And that'll be hard section, just go to the ground, go down. But, you know, actually, a few weeks.
Yeah. Well, our new engineer has his first, uh, test. It's his priority, right?
Have a good little test there.
It's long.
Is that a concern to you?
Well, I'm concerned, yeah, it's a little concerning to me. But I mean, cause the properties are, are rather actually now more vulnerable with flooding, because the water gets behind it. Now we're coming into the rainy season, I'm just a little concerned about timelines, and people are asking me about that.
It's, it's the engineering department's number one priority.
And it'll be short, um, probably a plan and solve, um, you know, everything else.
And we'll look for that report next, yeah, next month.
All right, thank you, Don. All right, uh, Paul? And by the way, welcome, Paul, for your first meeting, nice to have you on board.
Appreciate it. Um, actually, John did a report and, uh, I think we have a report, we're working on the same items, uh, working with John often to, uh, get up to speed and get these things moving. Uh, we talked about the living shoreline and drainage issue, and I already had that one. Um, two sixty-one, we upgraded projects, uh, the state, we had a meeting, probably a month ago or so. We, uh, got plans, marked up a lot of comments on the plans, give them some suggestions. Um, a lot of it had to do with integrating the new boardwalk thought and, and access up to Camaro County. So we haven't heard back from them directly, I did follow them, you'll be, we're kind of in a meeting set up, so we should see something shortly on a follow-up meeting. Um, they told me it's still on target for spring two thousand twenty. So, um, did you get that one in here accurately?
That's all.
Um, the beach dredge project, uh, John, they filed for a permit to dredge, you know, the beach. So we'll be following up on that. Um, Stacy again, we had a bunch of email back and forth with different things that are looking for information, so we'll get that information, so, get that moving. Same with the, uh, here pavilion, uh, I understand that was filed just recently, right?
Yeah, uh, it was filed this week.
Okay. So the, that's.
The application, the permit after they filed.
This is title permit, um, so that, uh, and then we'll, we'll work on getting the design done for the pavilion itself, or construction permits, it's kind of two aspects of it. Um, talked about the path. Uh, crosswalk, the mayor mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, we're gonna put that up, did, forgot the dates, Stacy can tell us, put that shortly. And next month we'll be back to do with that, um, crosswalk. I don't have anything else.
Does anybody have any questions with Paul?
Thank you, Paul. Would State Howard has them out? And if you might see them, they park at the, uh, Mall Beach, cause they were doing like four of those, four, uh, ground samples. In the highway, you know, they're about every two hundred feet from Eighth Street all the way up to, you know, kind of, uh, they take core samples, they're trying to see what's still, what's bearing, what even everything, they have a map on that.
Took the samples right in the road?
In the road, you have a little, you see a little eight inch, if you saw them out there with that, that's what they're doing, drilling to see what I found, that's what it was, and what they needed, looking back, so. Yeah, so they're good, long distance.
I think also they, they're contemplating how they want to overlay or take the road off the reef, but they're gonna new road it down. Obviously for us, we'd rather new road, you know. I don't know if you remember when they paved sentence, they put sentence testing, with asphalt, but I think they approved that repairing thing, disaster stuff. From our standpoint, we prefer that they take the pavement off.
When you made that, at the meeting, you made that position, take that position? Okay, uh, Rick, your report, please.
This month was a little bit slow, we've, you know, gone for a week, so. Um, most of my issues this past month, they, and it can get worse, people putting stuff out three weeks ahead of time for a haul trash pickup. Um, so I've got a, going to do an email blast for me, so I just worry that you want to send out to everybody know that, you know, salt pickup is just the night before, day before, that, three weeks before. Um, had a lot of dead trees in the last month that we addressed, um, got a few more we have to address, probably tomorrow, Monday. Um, pretty much everything else, people have been, have been fairly compliant, we've only had three vehicles last month. Uh, when we did one home inspection, uh, there were four business inspections done, and we did thirty-two house tags, that's one most of the grass. Um, and Karen's not here, but, but the budget passed, the new software should be coming in, she has the copy of the contract. Once you've done the looking at, uh, the resume, and then, uh, comments, I'm out, start installation and, and process to that.
Rick, do you have anything that you can report on your meeting with Holly Wall?
Uh, she's supposed to go to that cell tomorrow, I'll give her tomorrow with one, and then she wants to know if I can meet with, uh, the mayor on Monday. And discuss what they want to do as far as us, uh, helping them with their code enforcement and stuff like that.
We'll be addressing First Street.
You just read my lines. Thank you, thank you.
Two quick questions.
For Rick.
Um, when you say dead trees, what are, what, what are you looking at there, I mean?
Dead trees.
Just large, very large?
Any size.
Any size?
Any size at all, doesn't matter. Dead trees, we, we've been addressing now, like, just people with, you know, just piles of dead bushes, just to.
All right.
Like mostly larger dead trees, it caused some sort of problem, you know, the code says twenty-four hours, so. We're trying to address these, would it become safety issues, like they're playing fire team in, in the last month, month and a half. Dead or not.
And, and then the, the other one is, uh, you said you did thirty-two tags, Muslim of grass, uh, you know, we talked about this before, please, let's figure out a way that, you know, I mean, it, it, it's crazy hot out there right now, if there's any of these houses that are the senior citizens or our town, just, just can we come up with a way that we can do something, you know?
Now, most of, most of them had that, that issue, those, usually those were a little bit more leaning, where they tried to help us. Most of these have just been people who've just been out of town, haven't done it, or caught in between a rain here or there, or just. Most of them, once we put the tag on it, it's done, you know, that day, and we had somebody that day dumped a, dump truck full of dirt in the middle of the road to degrade your house. I came, I told this, I can't believe you, but dumped a whole dump truck full of dirt out here, tagged the house, talked to homeowner, and I left my home at night, it was gone. I'm like, how'd they got it out of there? I mean, it was pile of dirt, as big as, as big as this floor here, you know, six feet high, while they were going, so I don't know what to do with it, but. Usually when, when we tag something there, usually thirty, thirty foot.
Can you come across any seniors, obviously we're not gonna wait for Christmas in April, so.
No.
Just let us know. Thank you.
And you did notify the, uh, Catholic Church?
Yep.
There'd be a tree.
Yep.
Five. Okay, any question, any more questions, Rick?
I just want to thank you for remembering that and looking at first, because the, the North East side, I mean, people are doing a lot to.
Well, they've asked, we're, we're being, a meeting with the, the town manager tomorrow, and they're trying to work something out, we're gonna do, probably five hours a week with the code for some of the testing creatures.
Thank you.
Yeah, we want to work in a spirit of thought, Rachel. Right, Larry? Okay, Noel, your report, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
For the month of June, I give the normal, um, create advertisements, um, either in print or online to promote special events and town venues that are available for rent for, um, weddings and such. Um, designed a layout banner and promotional material for the town tent, the Dragon Boat Festival, I attended that festival and, um, worked at the town tent and photographed the event. Um, continue to promote playing the sunrise in celebration of, of the art sculpture competition and art festival. Designed a boot layout banners and promotional material for the M and M convention, I attend the convention and work to come to be there. Um, created and printed posters for upcoming movies and concerts. I've gone out here and there and photographed the progress on, um, Chesky Avenue, on all of the, um, the new additions and the upgrades we're doing, and the, the plantings and things like that. Um, had to go back and pull some old photos and newer photos for the report that Stacy and other people have, um, been working on for American Bloom. We did some before and afters and things like that. Um, Kelly took some time and updated and reformatted all of our forms, um, in town, while we have permit applications and, and things like that. She reformatted them also, they have our logo on them, and they're all consistent, other than having like, um, copy after copy and things. Um, all of those have been up to the cover, to the website, um, replaced the old ones with that. Um, other than that, just daily tasks around the office and website and, um, social media for certain things. Our, uh, Facebook likes increased by one hundred and fourteen for June, um, the total at the end of June is eight thousand four hundred forty-nine. Um, events coming up, of course, our Friday farmers market, um, we have a movie Saturday, fantastic piece, anywhere to find them. July twenty-second, we have Fred Maryland with music by Ashley Gaines and Sucker Punch, which is a band. Um, the same day, we have our art festival, same time, all of the artists will be in a mix between, um, the Fred Maryland, um, vendors. Um, which is a little different layout than we did last year. Uh, August first, it's National Night Out, and then concert on the pavilion on the eleventh of August is, uh, Beach Bums. Maybe on the beach, Beach Trivia on August nineteenth, we have our farmers market, customer appreciation night on August fifth. Um, and then four fall events there. Um, I wanted to mention the five level challenge, July twenty-second through thirtieth. There's this wire that's there, so if anyone's interested, we do this every year, um, we're, we pledge to repeat at least one thing from the Maryland farm every day, don't miss it.
Did anybody mention that North Beach retained the mayor's cup?
I didn't mention it, but.
Well, I think it should be mentioned.
Okay, that's good, go ahead.
North Beach won the mayor's cup for, for the fourth time in five years. So congratulations to our crew.
The trophy was carried to the M and M, you know, to the nation city, and Randy likes to walk by the Chesky Beach, do parade through and then, so.
That's healthy, that's healthy competition.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
It's just me.
And on the trophy, we, uh, had John Shae be the honorary captain of the trophy.
We, we are, by the way, placing, uh, at the town's expense, a, a bench, a black, on the boardwalk, uh, in memory of John Shae. That was their, that was John's request. Uh, any questions, Don? Why do you, you do such a great job, I mean, so much of the good things that are happening in the town are because of our public relations and, and marketing, everything. You sit there, you know, day after day, working and designing and punching keys and things like that, and it's.
It's a team, team member.
Well, we had a great team. Okay, um, Valverde's not here, you have her report.
Do we have a contract on the, like, vehicle?
You have it until December to expand the money.
Until when?
At December, we're looking for, um, bid specs.
Okay.
Right now, and if you don't find it, uh, towns, then we'll have to do our own, because it's our, our threshold.
Trying to piggyback on it.
Yes.
State contract.
Well, there's no state contract for it, but there are four towns who have purchased, and hopefully they have a bid spec that we can ride on.
Okay, uh, Brandon, you're one of our, for.
What should I say? What should I say, Uncle Dicky?
Uh, Ri- Richard, by the way, Richard's, uh, I guess she's your niece.
That's mine, that, that's his wife.
Well, okay.
Yeah, niece, I suppose.
Has been shadowing, uh, me and my assistant, she's aspires to be a trained dental assistant, she's been in the office this week, shadowing us. And, uh, I learned today that, uh, you know, that Richard is Uncle Dicky. I'd say, Bethany, you have just branded your uncle.
Oh, yes. I need some of the, uh, right, please, some of the, oh, yeah. Okay, all right, uh, hey, council. The sun is definitely shining on the beach, uh, and we had a great holiday weekend, uh, three day weekend turns into a four day weekend. And it was a saving weekend, although I asked out to beat me up big time, but it didn't happen. We did fifty-five thousand dollars in the quarter. And we are definitely in the, black, a hundred forty-seven thousand, one thirty-two, same period last year. So we're at fourteen thousand nine hundred seventy-five, and that also, uh, brought people to renting a lot of umbrellas in that heat. So that increase, uh, sure paid off. There you can see, we're at fourteen hundred dollars above the umbrella rentals over last year, same period. On top of that, interesting to watch, we had a lot of attendants, uh, I mean, they're, I was on the radio, I'm on the staff meeting, they're almost fighting for these umbrella installs, because they're getting ticks. They're not even paying fifteen dollars on umbrella, but they're ticking on top of that, one attendant made forty-seven dollars in ticks.
Oh, my.
And, and that weekend, not that day, but that weekend, so, um, they're like car salesmen, I'm on that.
We don't hear that, they don't report that.
Yeah.
But, but this is a new, this is a relative, a new phenomenon, because I've been watching out there, you know, over the years, as these young people put these uh, umbrellas up for, uh, the patrons, and more often than not, they weren't ticked.
Right.
But, so it's, speaks to the, uh, demographics, we're trying to tell people to come, you know, or understand that these young people deserve a tick, and that's, that's good to see.
And they have the young, the person, they don't take that.
Did we run out of umbrellas, last weekend, did we run out of umbrellas that weekend?
We typically run out of umbrellas anyway, and I ordered another twenty for the season, which is what we generally order, so, on hot days, we run out by noon. But the thing is with the beach, it recycles itself. You know, people are gonna be there for a couple hours, even with umbrella, they're coming back, so we're re-renting them, so it just doesn't come at noon.
Okay. I think the beach was able to handle, I can see how crowded it was, but with all those additional, were we pretty much maxed out in terms of?
Oh, and that's the heat, because if we were breezy, going with all that shade, they wouldn't, people would stay and linger, but our turnover, just like, we only had to close the beach in three times in the twelve years I've been there, capacity, so.
I can't remember what day it was, it was the fourth of July weekend, and I think there was, whoever, whoever was the, uh, in charge, supervisor in charge, you were, you weren't there, I can't remember what day it was. Kept checking to see the capacity, because it was real close.
Yeah, we, we want to be, server on top of that, because it might have been Jen, thank you, Jen. you, Jen. Um, that's important because we don't want to sell passes, you know, leaving a family of four people, that's fifty, sixty bucks, if they come back and say there's no room on the beach, so.
And give us an update on the jellyfish situation.
Oh, we're fine. Nets are up, don't just nets are up, uh, we haven't really seen that many, a few get through, that's a bunch, but, um, we're doing great, yeah, with that, so. We also, uh, some solutions that we use for stings for kids that, you know, can't really, um, but we're fine. Not something people can count, if one of the. Along with that revenue increase, the visitor counts are up, and I'm thrilled to show you that the resident counts have really jumped, uh, at this point to four thousand two hundred fifty-five over three thousand seven hundred thirty-eight, so again, that was this holiday weekend, um, that helps with that increase as well. And then you see the zip code report, um, again, those are reminding, for family, not for person counts. Uh, PG County, Washington DC, Montgomery, Calvert, et cetera, down, um, to, and then our new count for Chesapeake Beach, ninety-eight. So that's pretty good. Yeah, yeah.
Forty-six families from Springfield, Virginia.
Yeah, Channel Four News is, uh, I think they re-aired that, it's still kicking in, so, so it's from Virginia.
But, thank you. Any questions, Richard? Thank you, Richard. Okay, we're at that point in the meeting, uh, the floor is open for public comment. Okay. We'll move on to our business items. We are, we have deleted item one from the agenda. That, uh, award will be made either next month or at a special meeting, but we'd like to, uh, begin advertising, uh, immediately. We, we have the specs now. Uh, the second, uh, I need the concurrence of the council to distribute a request for proposal for the development of the town property located, it's parcel one A, block four, and parcel one D, block four, and those are the parcels that constitute the property that the town owns on the north side of Fifth Street between, uh, Bay Avenue and Chesapeake Avenue. Let me just briefly, uh, read one or two paragraphs so you'll understand the nature of the proposal. The town of North Beach, Maryland seeks a qualified developer to work with the town on the design and development of property under town ownership located on the north corner of Fifth Street and Bay Avenue in North Beach. The mayor and town council desire a unique concept for this cornerstone location, one that will set a high standard for the development of this part of North Beach. Applicants should demonstrate that the development is financially self-sufficient, requiring no town funds for the life of the project. Qualified developers must have significant experience and a demonstrated ability to develop successful, high-quality mixed-use developments. Qualified developers with previous experience with government slash private partnerships are preferred. Please see the selection criteria for detailed qualifications. I want to thank, uh, Pat Hadier, who assisted me with the preparation of this RFP, which was patterned after, uh, one that Calvert County recently used, uh, for the, uh, what's the property?
Arby's.
Arby's. Yes, down there in Prince Fredder. So what I need, uh, from the council this evening, uh, is the approval to, uh, advertise and to distribute, uh, this proposal. This request, I'm sorry, for proposal.
I'll move that, but I do have a question.
Well, let's get a second. Okay, Randy?
Yeah, my, my question is, um, I, I guess we're leaving it open whether it's a purchase from us and then develop or we retain ownership of the land and maybe develop.
Yes, that, that's all part of our negotiation. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, thank you. Okay, uh, under ordinances and resolutions, number one, an ordinance that was introduced last month, which appeals and replaces Article ten of the critical area overlay district requirements in the North Beach zoning ordinance. Uh, this is, uh, an update of the map that is required by the critical area commission as well as a requirement, uh, for us in order for our, um, pavilion to be, application to be considered. John, is there anything that you'd like to add at this point? Did I characterize it okay?
You hit the three important, the updates and state requirements, changing the map and getting the non-water dependent structures on here.
Anybody have any questions on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll, I'll move.
You'll move, you'll move to adopt the ordinance. Then second, any more questions? All in favor, the most would say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, thank you. Okay, we have two more ordinances. You see the description, uh, in the agenda. I, I will read one of them, um, because the only difference in the other one is the actual, um, parcel itself. But this is an ordinance that, uh, I'm asking to be introduced, these, both these ordinances this evening. They are ordinances authorizing, in one case, the acquisition of forty thirty-six Third Street, North Beach, Maryland. The property of Mary C. Westcott by eminent domain for a public purpose and authorizing the city attorney to commence such proceedings. Whereas the town of North Beach is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, and whereas pursuant to Maryland Local Government Code, annotated code five dash two of four, legislative authority, general powers of municipalities and town charter, section nineteen dash twelve oh one, acquisition, possession and disposal, the town has the authority to acquire by conveyance, purchase or condemnation any real property located within its corporate limits due for public purpose. And whereas the town charter, section nineteen dash twelve oh two, authorizes the town of North Beach to condemn real property located within the corporate limits of the town in fee for any public purpose. And whereas the town charter, section nineteen dash twelve oh two, provides that any activity, project or improvement authorized by the charter or state law applicable to the town is deemed to be a public purpose. And whereas the town of North Beach to desire to construct a performing arts center, library or other related public building in the town, which use the mayor and council deemed to be a public purpose. And whereas the mayor and town council desire to acquire the property known as forty thirty-six Third Street, North Beach, Maryland, two oh seven one four, owned by Mary C. Westcott, for the public purpose of building a performing arts center, library or other related public building. Now therefore, it is hereby ordained by the mayor and town council of the town of North Beach, Maryland, that the mayor and town council determine that the acquisition of forty thirty-six Third Street, North Beach, Maryland, two oh seven one four, is necessary for a public purpose, which purpose is a performing arts center, library or other related public building, and that the town of North Beach is authorized to acquire such real property and be settled by eminent domain. And be it further ordained and enacted by the mayor and council that the town of North Beach and the town shall proceed to acquire by eminent domain the simple interest of forty thirty-six Third Street, North Beach, Maryland, two oh seven one four, and the town attorney is hereby authorized to commence the necessary proceedings. And be it further ordained that this ordinance shall become effective on the thirtieth of August of twenty seventeen, after having been read at two successive town council meetings pursuant to nineteen dash thirty-three one one of the town shore charter by order of the mayor and town council. For the public's information, this is the property, uh, located on the north side of Third Street in between, uh, Chesapeake and Dayton, where an unoccupied house has stood for, I don't think. It's been unoccupied as long as I've been in the area.
Yeah, it's unoccupied generally, I mean, if people are in the area, it's not a bad place, so, it's a question. But it, it was where a Frenchy's restaurant is, it's a part of the bar. Good, you're right about that.
Uh, all right, uh, we need a, to introduce, uh, this ordinance this evening. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Severed.
Okay, thank you, Gwen.
Awesome.
Just, just introductions all the evening.
Did, did, I, I never got a response from John, actually, we, we, we don't respond to that.
No.
We had not, and Karen, actually, I gave Karen the other day, called the Westcotts. She just goes to home with a sister, whose poor sister is involved with this property. And the one sister was going to relate to another sister, and she has not heard back from anyone else since, now that she's.
That's an only contact we've had, a response to be there from them. Okay, the second ordinance is number seventeen dash eleven. It refers to, uh, the, the property of the Franchi family, uh, which abuts this property both to the east and to the west. I won't read the whole ordinance, it's the same verbatim. Just, if you can picture that, there's, this is actually where the Franchi restaurant used to be and, and the portion of it that's on the corner of Dayton and Third Street, I have never seen anything, uh, there.
There was a falling down little hotel there for years. I, I've been walking here long enough for that. We ended up, we ended up having to force them to tear it down at some point.
Well, the, you know, the restaurant's been down for fifteen, fifteen, twenty years. It's apparent that, you know, the owners of the property have made no genuine effort to, uh, develop properties which are key properties, uh, right in the middle of the civic spine of the town of North Beach, we've had no indication of any interest in doing so. Uh, town has legitimate uses for these sort of properties. So I ask for an introduction of ordinance, number seventeen dash eleven. Okay, thank you, Jane. Okay, uh, we'll move on to mayor and council reports, so Randy?
Stay out of the sun. I mean, everybody else is going to have good stuff to say, so I don't have to worry.
Thank you, Randy, Jane.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out in this hot weather, take care of yourself.
Thank you, Mark, for coming. Uh, Mr. Mary, why don't you look at our circle back to the crosswalks?
Sure.
So I sent them off to council, they're following this. So I did a little research, I have no final idea of these crosswalks. It turns out, we're going to continue to get, I've done studies on these kind of things. And specifically where I was looking at was a study talking about the different styles of crosswalks, depending on the place. Um, and the, the study was comparing the difference between a crosswalk that just has the transverse line, sort of two white lines that go across the river, uh, to those that also have lines that are perpendicular to that, more like a ladder style or continental style. So the result of that study from the DOT said that for the existing locations that they're studying, a general observation that the continental markings and ones that have the, the ladder style, uh, protect about twice the distance upstream as the transverse markings, meaning the ones that only have the two white lines going on each side. And this increase in distance reflects speed setting and the increased awareness of the presence of the crosswalk at a particular amount of operating speed. And then as further go on, say the recommendation is considering the varicors, the continental, uh, the default of all crosswalks across control areas. So what I want to kind of pose to the council is, as we're finalizing the crosswalks, do we want to look at changing the style slightly rather than just being a solid red that'll also have those white perpendicular lines, kind of like you see in Laurel and some other places?
Yeah, I, I, I think we do simply because that's another visual cue for the crosswalk slower down. Remember, part of the whole reason we did all this was partly, yeah, was to make Chesapeake Avenue look nicer, but a lot of it also incorporated in what is speed controlled, hence the bump ups, the eye level of the, the precipitation in, in the rain, or if there aren't enough trees, I guess, in short red, like, you know. Um, and, and I think crosswalks with, with just a solid red don't pop out as much as if they have some sort of crosshatch, you know, whether it's a ladder style, a pole set or a diagonal. Um, Ocean City has very similar, Penn State Highway installed those from the company, they, they, they're, their interior installed by somebody else. Um, and that they have a running lawn that had in West Union City building, and I, I do, I don't like that, I, I just, I just don't like. It doesn't really look like a crosshatch, it's like a wall just made of the street. But, but I do think that where for, for the crosswalks to pop out, we have to have some sort of white, white or crosshatch of some sort. I know Mickey wants that crab.
I just think it'd be fun. Um, actually, I would like to see blue, sort of like one of our logos, um, and that's just mainly if it pop, like red, red sanders, but I, I, I don't care, be the either way. I just know that having a color on there will definitely help make it stand out, as well having a white, some type of white mark in there, so.
So are you suggesting the, the white lines on top of something else?
No, it's all part of the same.
No, I mean, on top of color, not just white or the black.
For red and, and the.
The red. It would be part of the pattern, if that makes sense.
That's basically the exact thing to install in the door, and recall this picture, that's the pattern of the video.
So you have the two white transverse lines, the red infill, and then white lines like perpendicular, between the transfers.
And you still have the brick pattern, you, when you do that.
When you do white, uh, like, all talk about, they, they'll sell the brick pattern, we sell that red, like, but they take the brick pattern itself. You have two foot red, then you put, you know, two foot white, maybe three feet, however you want. They come in two boxes, brick and wall. Now, you have like a brick pattern, it would just be a different color.
Yeah.
It would be like the solid white line on the outside, it would be brick pattern, stamp and everything.
So like, you have the white, like, you have, like, the gray sand in the light.
So the white doesn't go over the brick, it goes right next to it.
Yeah, well, the white just went across the part of the brick.
Yeah, you're washing it.
It's just like a brick, but it'd be white instead of all red.
That's red, white, red, white, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, but it's two foot strip, it's stamped like a brick, it was like a brick pattern, it follows the same, but it just becomes like a ladder.
It's just the same white, the red and the black.
Yeah, same white, normal black.
Stamping it also.
Stamping, sealed, sealed.
Yeah, yeah, we, like, they lay that down first, and he, and then stamp, it's all the stamp.
Right, is that, is that the wish, council?
Well, here's, well, for the last six years, I've had many discussions with Donnie and the police department, and we've tried the signs coming out, and, I mean, we've tried everything, Jane even talked about one time, but carrying something across the street, remember that?
They do that, they do actually.
Absolutely do, absolutely do. Um, I would highly recommend we do something a little different because we walk to town with our, our, our kids every day and it's, you're, you're playing Frogger sometimes trying to get across the road. Um, people do not stop, they just don't stop. Um, so I would, I would have no problem with putting the white, if that could help it because it doesn't work right now, the straight red does not work. You walk it every day, Paul, you see the same thing with your kids. We need to do something different. I'm willing to go with it, if, I mean, but we can't just do what we did because it didn't work. I'm not willing to just do it for cosmetics. It's not, there's a safety issue in our town, but that's our fault. And we haven't, if this could give us a better chance of having more safety, I think we have to do that.
That's one of the studies we've studied, because we.
Absolutely.
And if I'd like to bring it out to us, I'll get, actually, email, know a picture of the white, to have a picture of it. With the red and then the.
I mean, I kind of want to be a little more, we just got that.
And we have to do something that, that shows up.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't want it to be the only thing when people are driving into town that all these here, these.
I think we should have, like, like, be an option.
I'm, I'm sure we could, that, and then the board office, so.
Yeah, yeah. Let's do that, let's do that as an option.
Paul also has a good point, if you want that, because the Chesapeake Avenue may drive the speeding laws, you wouldn't have to have. Paul also has a good point, if you want that, because if Chesapeake Avenue is the main drive, the speeding laws, you wouldn't have to have it on the side, it's just like a number, like Second Street. You have Second Street intersection, you have all red, you have white just on Chesapeake Avenue.
I think it is an option.
Because it could be awesome, I mean, we could do it as an option in the pitch.
Yeah, it's a same thing.
We're going to have to put them together again.
Yeah, go on, I'll make sure we set up some, 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 you know, side.
We've got, we've got some moves.
Yeah, we got some.
Start on that one, that he said.
We'll start on the amateur out, right, beginning the night, was eight in line, and one, the red brick carrying the patch, the crosswalk, five nine two, transverse lines, twelve foot wide. I have three.
Twelve inches wide.
Twelve inches wide, sorry. I have three will be with the white, red, white, red, white, carrying the patch, so we put a lot of, we have three options, and we can pick whatever one. So we're picking right from the left.
That's where you're planning on, okay?
We'll have an option on the other side.
Okay? Okay, well, good, okay, well, you know how to prepare that. Okay, Randy.
All I have is, I don't know about you, but I think it was hotter last night at ten o'clock than it was during the day. And about six o'clock this morning was hot, so just keep an eye for your neighbor, all I want to pass on is just keep an eye for your neighbor. ACs are going out, I mean, just, just pets, it's just crazy weather out there, so, thank you for coming, but just really come together as a community and look out for your neighbor, it's very hot right now. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight as well. Back to the, kind of, the speeding issue, I know at one point we had the speed bumps, that we had tried out the movable speed bumps. Back to Bay Avenue, I don't know if that's something that we can try on Bay Avenue, but it's, it's definitely a concern, and it seems like it's, the issue's getting worse.
Yeah, additionally, additionally, to put them in between First and Fifth.
Exactly.
Speeding is not a problem lately now, but I understand between Seventh and going out of town, it is. Yeah, I think we should.
We can do that, or like a speed bump faster, I give a call. Speed bumps usually have to put like two hundred feet apart, to make them work as, as somebody one, you know, that they don't speed up even more and take off, so, we can look out.
We have, we have those, right?
Those bumps.
So it's pretty much more out, and that's why we need, the problem's kind of more bad, so we need to order, but we can't order them for out.
So move, move. Paul, Paul, what's been your experience? What works?
Humps or bumps?
My experience is people don't like speed bumps.
Those, those were parts, you really had to go slow.
You had to go really slow.
We need people to go slow. But putting them on the same ground.
The humps, the longer, like, the longer the speed.
Their stripes, too.
And could you ship by those, like, the portable ones, or you have?
She took that down.
There are two, up by Friendship United Methodist Church, right before.
Yeah, yeah.
Took that one out.
I guess they did, yeah, that's right, because I don't fly.
Is that something we can just, can we do?
That would definitely work, so, yeah.
It's annoying.
Yes, we can. Is everybody okay?
Are we able to do that on that road?
One thing, I think you might, well, that's.
I wanted to put rubber strips around Gwen's house, like, she, she nicks that.
Especially if they hire her somewhere back to Eighth Street, because that's a couple years out.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I think my name has a problem with the fire department. Yeah, a lot of problems.
They have a problem.
All right, y'all, y'all determined, I think, the best place.
Yeah, we figured out, and then you see why, maybe they took one out, but we don't have to, your buddy would move the one up.
Mickey, your report?
Um, just want to remind everybody, it doesn't rain this weekend. I don't think it's going to get rained out, so if it does, I believe the rain will be the next day, correct? Yeah. Uh, it's the first of a trilogy, trilogy of Creek World area tournaments.
Well, intended?
Yeah, true, it should have a good crowd. Other than that, thank you everybody for coming out. I had fun on Dragon Boat Day. I had fun the day of Dragon Boat Day.
Well, we've been blessed with wonderful weather for the weekend, so.
And everybody, please get out and enjoy, go work this other weekend.
Yeah, seeing Larry back there remind me, he did mention the Taste of the Beaches tonight. It's, uh, that's September night. Is everything on track, Larry? Anything you want to add?
Just, uh, still looking for sponsors and vendors, uh, things are going well. And thank you for the support, and I appreciate it.
Did anyone mention we won Dragon Race with Chesapeake Beach?
What's that?
Did, did anyone mention that we won, won the race with, with you guys?
I think the Russians were involved in that. I'm just saying.
Great, yeah, I want to be of knowledge, in addition to Larry Jaworski, we have Councilman Greg Morris also here from the town of Chesapeake Beach. Welcome, Greg. Okay, uh, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn and to adjourn. What is that, Jane?
I just like everybody in the town to know that Stacy, our town clerk, was made, voted to be president of all the town clerks in the state of Maryland at our last conference.
All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn and to go into executive session to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto. So move? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you all, have a good evening, stay cool, stay safe.